I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, at six thirty. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Townsend.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's dedication will be given by Reverend Bob Russell, Family of Faith Church. Would everyone stand? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Father.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in the name of Jesus Christ. Ask for your blessings upon this city council of Tarpon Springs. Give these men and women the strength, the wisdom to work together by making wise and just decisions that affect the citizens of this great city. We ask that you bless those who work and support our town, especially the first responders, our police force, fire department, and paramedics. And Father God, tonight we ask your special blessing for those families that lost loved ones in the senseless shooting yesterday at Naval Yard, our nation's capital. As a witness yet another horrific disaster in our country, please forgive us as we allow our moral values to slip away. Father, we commit our ways to you and ask your divine guidance. We ask that you bless our troops, those who are willing to give up their lives so that we may come and meet here tonight and enjoy the freedoms that they protect. In Jesus' name we pray, and everybody says, amen.
Uh, for anyone here for item four B, the zombie run and family fun day that's going to be deferred until October first, two thousand thirteen. Also, item number eleven, Application Twelve Six Seven, Denami, Poland was deferred by the applicant. Uh, we will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. If you have something, please state your name, address for the record. You have to go to the podium there, state your name, address for the record.
Uh, my name is Tim, last name Clements, K L I M I S, uh, address is eight seventy-five Seminole Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, two four six eight nine. I'm here to talk about, um, a lift station that was, uh, that you guys may or may not be aware of that is being upgraded or was being upgraded in front of my house. Um, I was probably back in October is when they commenced this, uh, project. And it was told that, uh, by, um, one of the engineers, Gary Sherman, that it was going to be little or no, uh, bother to any of us in the community or in my block or in my area, especially in my house. And, uh, it was probably going to be a project that was going to be done maybe in February or March at the latest. Uh, February, March rolled around, I guess, uh, things had happened and, uh, there was some setbacks with some, uh, uh, big slate, big rocks they found underground. They couldn't get these rocks broken up, so it had to delay. March, I was told, May. May, I was told, uh, you know, we didn't know when it was going to be done. There was no foreseeable future or no foreseeable end of when the project was going to complete. And, um, and along, uh, over this whole time, I was assured by, uh, the, uh, Engineering Department that, uh, we even went over the plans prior to, um, this commencing, and they sho- he showed me some plans that the fence was going to come to within five feet of my driveway. Whereas, I have some pictures if you guys would love to see them. I'd love to show them to you of, um, where it was and how small it was compared to how big it is now. I mean, we were first going to the Taj Mahal, like the kids around them, my neighbors, because it's just, it's monstrous. It's probably three times the size of, uh, what it was. Um, the whole, my whole front of my house is completely blocked. I can't see it at all coming off of Riverside onto Seminole. If you guys are familiar with the area, front and corner of Seminole, Castle Terrace, there was a small little, uh, lift station. I have a picture of, I never took a picture of the lift station, obviously, but I have a picture of it in the background of my children when we first moved in the house. And then I have one of it now, when it's done today. It seems to be complete on, uh, as far as the company is doing the job, uh, on their behalf, but the city still has some work to do, I guess. My sprinklers systems are up, upside down. I haven't been able to use them for, since October. Um, my driveway has been inaccessible numerous, numerous times. Um, I can't get my driveway. Um, not to mention just probably more importantly, just the size of this thing. And really, my question is, what prompted the city to put this size of a lift station here? Whereas, if you go around, and I'm sure you guys are probably all familiar with, uh, the lift stations, maybe you're not familiar with the lift stations. I am because I have it in my house, so I'm familiar with them. And before I bought the property, I was aware of this lift station, and I was assured by Ray Price, I believe it was Vice Mayor Price, that the lift station was going to be upgraded. It was, uh, it was outdated, and it was going to be upgraded, and it was going to be underground, it was going to be put underground. So I said, okay, fine. So I, I proceeded to build my house, and we built a twenty-two hundred square foot house on that corner lot, and we're happy there. And we love Tarpon Springs. We live in Tarpon. I've graduated Tarpon nineteen eighty-four and been here all my life, and I don't want to stand in the way of progress. So, you know, what am I going to tell Mr. Sherman when he comes to me and says, hey, we're going to upgrade this lift station? Okay, fine. I was told by Ray Price that we were going to upgrade the lift station, and I was hoping that it was going to, you know, make a big improvement. Unfortunately, it did. It made a huge eyesore, to say the least. I mean, it's, it's attractive. I mean, I'm not saying it's not attractive. It's got a beautiful, beautiful fence around it, vinyl, nice fence. The grass is laid today. It's really nice. My sprinklers are still not fixed. Half my sidewalk is still not done. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what's going on. So really, basically, what I'm here today to do is to kind of maybe inform the council of what's happening, of what's going on in this, in this area in front of my house. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. I haven't been able to access my driveway, uh, numerous times, uh, just the upward, the, the thing, if you guys can take a look, I mean, I can show you. That's a tree in the background, and you can see the lift station in the background. And here's a couple other pictures. I have numerous pictures here of, of, uh, my driveway was completely demolished by the crane, the huge cranes that were there. They replaced the driveway that was, that was demolished. However, the other part of such pounding to break this, uh, to break this big limestone that was there, I think created other cracks in my driveway that weren't replaced. So, uh, uh, you know, again, I'm here to, uh, just make you guys aware of what's going on, and, uh, maybe we can come to some kind of a, get something, you know, done here with this lift station. Because it's, I, from what I understand, there was, there was never a, uh, any, any type of public hearing. There was never any type of public notification that this was going to happen. And, uh, all this work was done with, uh, without anybody really being aware of, uh, of, of what was going to happen here with this lift station. And, you know, again, there's one on the corner, there's one on the end of Mears on Florida Avenue that's underground. There's another one on Chesapeake that's underground. They're very small. There's another one in front of Rotary Park that's underground. Why was this one chosen to be made so big? You know what I'm saying? I don't understand.
And I, I can, uh, feel your frustration, and you're right, uh, I, I don't have any knowledge of really a why and rest. But what I ask is that the city manager will have, uh, appropriate staff members to maybe meet with you to talk about what the process and procedure is as far as doing that. And then try to rectify anything else that we believe that the, the city might have, uh, called. So, uh, we'll, uh, look at, uh, trying to meet with you, or you meet, come here, do I see a property, and, uh, see what we can do.
That would be fine. I really appreciate it. And I, I can't say that, uh, you know, the city's been, you know, there's been some communication, open communication between me and the Engineering Department. They would call me on occasion and let me know what was happening and maybe leave a message or something, and I would get a message. Or I actually, uh, went over and met Gary one day at his office, and we sat and we talked for a little while as to what was going wrong. My driveway was a mess, and they were going to break the driveway up, and I couldn't get access in and out of my house. I had to actually drive through my grass to get in and out of the driveway from the side, from Castle Terrace. I couldn't access any of my home from Seminole at all for weeks on end. I mean, it was just, uh, it was an nightmare.
And I apologize for any inconvenience, uh, you know, there's usually four minutes, but I, I know you're just, this is something new for you, and wanted to give you adequate time to be able to express yourself, and we'll try to rectify any wrong that we possibly can.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I have more pictures if, uh, you'd like me to leave what you got.
Um, you want to leave it with the clerk, or you want to hold on to it and give it to the appropriate party? That would be good, that too, because for us, it's not going to be an hour's period.
Are there any other public comments? Here now, we'll go to our proclamation. Item number one is, uh, cyber bullying, uh, week. This is pro- proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas cyber bullying is willful and repeated harm. When a child or teen is embarrassed, harassed, or threatened by another child or teen using texts or images through the internet, interactive technologies, digital technologies, and/or, uh, and/or mobile phones. Whereas forty-three percent of teens aged thirteen to seventeen report that they have been, they have experienced some sort of cyber bullying. One in four has had it happen more than once, and whereas ninety-five percent of social media users and teens have witnessed cruel behavior on social networking sites. And they have seen others ignoring the mean behavior, and whereas only one in ten victims will inform a parent or trusted adult of their abuse. And only one in six parents know their child has been bullied via a social networking site. Whereas children and teens who experience cyber bullying are more likely to have low self-esteem, have poor grades, have unwillingness to attend school, experience stress-related health concerns, experience in-person bullying, use drugs and alcohol, retaliate through violent measures, and increased thoughts, attempts for suicide that persist into adulthood. And whereas parents and communities share responsibilities for and have the ability to prevent cyber bullying and to promote healthy and safe relationships for children and teens. Now therefore, I, David, all right, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim September twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, as Cyber Bullying Awareness Week.
Uh, you want to make sure the appropriate people get that.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? We have a presentation for the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Beautification Awards. I'm not sure who the recipient is.
This might be one of our quieter ones. Sue Thomas, President of Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, one eleven East, uh, Tarpon Avenue. We, this is something that we really, really enjoy doing, and more and more, we're seeing the signs all over where we've done this for about three and a half years. And a lot of the presentations that we make have been buildings that really look terrible. They were really derelict. And we kind of forgot the people who always looked nice. And then the people who always looked nice made their building look even nicer. And if you've been by Doby's Funeral Home lately, the new plannings look absolutely wonderful. The landscaping is great. And we really wanted them to have this award so people know what kind of, uh, how much Tom cares about our community, and that, of course, is always evident. So we're very happy to present this to you.
What time is this meeting supposed to be over?
Oh, you want to talk? I know you want to talk. You better set the four minute clock. Jump in, Tom. I'll take a picture if you talk.
Oh, okay. Do I need to state my name, address, and everything? Oh, okay, sure, sure. Where do I live, Chris? Seven oh one East Tarpon Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida, three four six eight nine, world-renowned United States of America, Tarpon Springs. Yeah. Um, I would like to thank Sue and the chamber for giving me this award. I certainly have done a lot of improvements on the building since it was the old mob of insurance, and, uh, I love being a part of this community, and I love beautification. Uh, for instance, David Banther here, uh, when he was a little baby, I changed his diapers. He's got the beautification that was there. Boy, it was terrible, David. And that Townsend Tarpani, he shot a turkey one time, and a Catholic priest said, "Oh, I read about Townsend in the newspaper." He, he was Irish. He said, "I, he shot that turkey. What did he do with the turkey?" You remember Father Ernest said that about you. But also Mayor Archie and Chris Alahousis and I were in school together. Well, I, right, right in this gym here, there was a mat, and I wrestled Archie to the mat, and he begged me. He said, "Let me up, let me up." I had him on the mat. Chris Alahousis, when he came from Greece, what year did you come from Greece? What was it? Sixty-six. We were in school together. I taught him how to speak English, okay? And his mother used to iron his underwear. I mean, how about him? These Greek moms, back then. My mom said, "Just put them on, be on the four-day system." But, uh, I, I heard rumors, and I want to squash that rumor right now, Ray. Please squash this. I, I'm not running for mayor. I'm just running. Thank you all very much, this ward, and thanks to everyone that's been here tonight. And one other quick mentioning thing about Tarpon Springs Police, who I love dearly, and the Fire Department, Chief Butcher. We, we erected a monument, and I was so honored to be able to, to pay for a large portion of this monument. And one thing I want to thank the chief and, uh, my dog Lucy. I don't, if, did anybody ever hear about my dog Lucy? Uh, she's daddy's girl, and that we were able to put the marker in memory of Lucy, and also a picture of Lucy on, on the wall there. But hopefully, chief and chief butcher, we never have to put a police officer's name on that ever again. We just want it to be beautiful. I'm going to get out of here, because Alahousis is going like that. He wants to get home tonight. Thank you all very much.
Well, I'd just like to thank Mr. Dobbys for his beautification and all he does for Tarpon, and also for helping us to maybe have a time limit for those people that come before us with this beautification award, too. Um, are there any comments, any public comments?
We will go to our next item, uh, which is, uh, Consider Agenda, Satisfaction and Release of Leaves, Special Events, Oktoberfest, uh, Merchants Association, October eighteenth, nineteenth. Um, B has been deferred. C is Halloween Food Truck Rally, Merchants Association, October twenty-sixth. Sponge Dock Arts and Crafts Show, Merchants Association, October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Uh, five is approved additional services authorization, number one, T O R F Q, number one, two, zero, zero, eight, two, dash, S, dash, J J, L and R Industrial Boulevard Extension. Six is award file number one, four, zero, 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 two, N, uh, dash, D M, Single Source Purchase of Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management System, Annual Maintenance. Seven is approved change order number two to bid number one, two, zero, zero, eight, one, dash, B, dash, J J, Seminole, uh, pump station. Eight is award file number one, four, zero, 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 three, dash, N, dash, D M, Single Source Purchase of Software Maintenance for various software applications. Nine is award bid number one, three, zero, one, one, dash, B, dash, C M, Water Main Replacement, Direction of Boar, uh, Abicard, Testier, and Ankle Drive. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull?
Four A and C.
Four A and C, uh, if you want to talk about them first, or you, you want us to bring your player next?
You can, you want to discuss them now? Um, four A, my question is more so just for some clarification. Um, in the backup, there's some data or information that kind of contradicts itself. Um, so it would be, my question would be, is if Tarpon Avenue is to be closed for this event? And I see the map, the map, I just can't read the map. I mean, the map is nice enough.
You're talking about the Oktoberfest?
Correct. No. Okay. That simple as that. Um, and then four C, uh, was just a little bit of, I guess you could use it as feedback. Um, I was just curious if the event, why or if the event could start just a little bit later. Um, it's scheduled to go from four to nine, and I was thinking from five to ten would be a little bit better. Um, and helps with some of the, some of the people on Tarpon Avenue who are trying to close their business maybe for a little while before the end of the day, and then reopen for, for after hours for the food truck. Um, so it's not necessarily something that, you know, I would insist on. It's just something that I thought would be more beneficial to, uh, to the party or for the food truck rally. Um, and that would be from, from five to ten versus four to nine. And it helps with, the street starts getting closed at two, it would, it would push the street getting, getting closed back to about three, um, for the, for the setup that was, that's needed prior to the event. Um, and I don't see, I don't see Ray here, so.
Hi, I'm David Goutsman from seven thirty five, Bill Decanese. Uh, Townsend, I think, I, I'm not exactly sure about the facts, but Ray is not, yeah, she had a funeral to attend, uh. I think going to ten o'clock, I think it gets too late for the food trucks. I mean, I don't think anyone's hanging around and eating that late. I think that's why it was scheduled for, what is it?
Four to nine.
Four to nine.
Yeah. Yeah, that could be. I wa- like I said, I wasn't aware of that. I mean, I know we've had them later into the evening in the past.
Have you? I, I don't remember. I thought they always started at that time.
No. They've been, I, I know for sure at least one, I think. Now, I don't know what the feedbacks from the vendors were, whether or not they made any money late into the evening or not. Um, but to me, that was just something, something to look at. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it as is. I was just, if Ray was here, maybe we could.
Can we, I, I don't know. Does it take us, Mark, do you know about setting up? Does it usually take two hours to set up? That if maybe we can just let them start setting up like at three o'clock instead of two o'clock? You, maybe, what, how about if we look into it? I mean, do you need to know now to approve this?
What, what I would suggest is maybe try to look at, um, setting up as late as possible, and if what Commissioner or Tarpan has suggested, and there's no objection to move in that time, um, because I, I don't know, and you don't know.
No, I don't.
So then it's trying to get what the appropriate individuals to figure out if it could move some, if it's not an hour, maybe it's a half an hour.
Okay. And we can work with the vendors, too, on the food trucks and, uh, just tell them.
Make the latest setup as possible.
Okay.
As soon as we find out from them what the event is, because I don't know who particularly is coming here, so.
Okay.
Do that and get back with me.
Yep.
Are there any, uh, public, uh, comments on this item? Show the evidence motion.
Move for approval.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Townsend.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery. Yes.
Yes. Uh, next we go to ordinance resolution, the item number, uh, ten A, Proposed Amendments to Regulating Plans, Ordinance Twenty Thirteen Dash Eighteen, Appendix D, City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, uh, Smart Code, Second Reading.
Ordinance Twenty Thirteen Dash Eighteen, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending certain sections of Appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Community Redevelopment Area and Sponge Dock Smart Code. By amending Chapter One, General Instructions, Table Four E, Sub I Building Function, Table Four F, Specific Function in Use, Table Five A Code Summary, Table Five B, Sub Three, T Four C, Residential High District, Table Five B, Sub Eleven, S T C, Marine Industrial slash Commercial District, and Chapter Six, Definitions, Providing for Separability, and Providing for an Effective Date, Second Reading of Ordinance Twenty Thirteen Dash Eighteen by Title Only. This ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only on July thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, and September four, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. Um, as you said, this is second reading of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eighteen. Um, since first reading, um, by way of, uh, some input from our economic development side of the house, working with some of the merchants on the Sponge Docks, um, there were some recommended additions to the definition that's being proposed for the outdoor storage of, or outdoor display of merchandise. Um, yeah, those requested changes were, um, pretty simple to work into the, um, you know, and weren't, you know, major changes, uh, to work into the definition. So those had been included. Um, it's kind of lengthy. If you want me to read the full change, should I read the full change into the, into the record, Mr. Attorney? That's not required. Um, if you have questions about it, I'd be happy to, um, you know, to answer, you know, what I can and what we work with with the merchants. Um, otherwise, uh, staff recommendation is to approve this, um, with the proposed changes to the definition of outdoor display as amended. Thank you.
Uh, about how many, uh, citizens do you think will be affected by this, by the proposed change?
Um, I, probably, you know, a dozen or more are going to have to do some sort of alteration to how they're, how they're displaying merchandise outside to be fully compliant with this proposed definition, so, um, you know, as I took and drive around.
Probably all, all twelve of them are out of compliance now, and could be started now.
Yeah, they probably don't meet today's definition as well, so I, yeah.
We're not in a case where there's somebody who legal now and going to be illegal. They're already illegal, but we clarified the definition so we can get it, so. They're not affecting people who legally have stuff out there, because on our walk of the docks, I don't think any of them were, so. I don't know if that, uh, asked about how much time we would give them to come into compliance, but if they're already out of compliance.
Well, I, I'm sure we'll do a, you know, a courtesy walk and notice about the new requirements to make sure everyone's on board before we start, you know, code, you know, citing people for code enforcement. That's only fair.
Any, uh, Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. Um, so Mr. Smith, for the record, uh, the memo that was submitted to us by Ms. Seber has been, uh, added into the language.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and then my other question is, in relation to the kiosk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are there going to be any negative impacts on existing kiosks?
Existing kiosks that, um, were never properly permitted, so anything that's had a permit that's been properly permitted in the past is obviously legally non-conforming. And I want to say one caveat, um, to, you know, to that, there's, the kiosks really are, when you're allowing someone to come onto your property and sell a product, you know, under a booth or a tent or something like that, that's really what's intended. It's somebody else occupying your property. If you have a, I would not consider, um, a ticket booth for, if you have a parking lot, and the only thing your parking does is primary, the only thing that lot does is primary purpose is parking, and you have an accessory ticket booth, I would not consider that to be a kiosk at that point, because it's, it's the primary, it's accessory to, to a primary use. So if something in that vein, I think we would not, we would not consider that a kiosk, so there's going to be some judgment calls on those. But there's really, those are really going to be limited to the parking lots, and, and they're still going to have to, if they don't have a permit for the structure that they've got, they'll have to get a permit.
Okay, so that, that was my next question.
Okay.
If there's an existing kiosk.
Right.
That was done either before we kept records, or I guess at that point it would be a little bit different scenario. But if it was done in recent history and done without a permit, then it would just be come in and pay the permit fee, more or less.
If, if it can be, if, kiosks for like retail sales of things of, of items will not be permitted unless they've been properly permitted before, which there's only going to be a handful of them down there that were.
Right.
At that point in time, they were looked at as like accessory uses, um, as they went through, you know, a permitting process. But there's quite a few down there that have never received any kind of permits, so those are the ones that are going to be adversely affected.
And were those property owners noticed?
Um, not specifically with this process, but when we went through, um, the, when we were doing the moratorium on kiosks and everything that took place with that, there were several properties that were identified as having unpermitted kiosks down there. They weren't specifically notified for this process, no. This was noticed in the paper through our Normal Land Development Code Amendment.
Mm-hmm. So they were notified when, when, uh, staff did the walk through the docks and tried to.
They know they're illegal.
I just want to make sure, in recent history, we've had, you know, notification talks, trying to.
They're very well aware, because I personally did the walk for a lot of them, so.
So, so we're clear, though, I, I think for the most part, on one, they're permitted for, or one, they're permitted after, and also, uh, kiosks that can be viewed as accessory uses to the individual.
Some primary use, correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's going to be a handful that are going to be adversely affected.
Any other questions? Any, uh, public comments on the title? Show the evidence motion.
I, I think there is a public comment.
We've actually said that here. Any public comments? That's for David. I, I don't want to talk you out of it, though, David. Show the evidence motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yeah.
Commissioner Townsend.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, item number, uh, ten B, Ordinance, uh, Twenty Thirteen Dash Nineteen, Appendix A of City of Tar- Uh, item number, uh, ten B, ordinance, uh, twenty thirteen, dash, nineteen, appendix A of city of Tarpon Springs, uh, Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, second reading.
Uh, there are no changes to this proposed ordinance since first reading. Staff recommendation is to approve it as presented.
Are they reading this, your honor? Do we need to read that ordinance?
Yeah.
Sorry, I jumped down there.
Ordinance twenty thirteen, dash, nineteen, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code by amending sections one, three, two point zero one, sidewalk waiver, and creating sections one, three, two point zero two, and one, three, two point zero three, establishing a sidewalk trust fund and describing the allowable uses of monetary contributions to the trust fund, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. The second reading of ordinance twenty thirteen, dash, nineteen by title only. Ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, and September four, two thousand thirteen.
Are there any, uh, public comments in the title? Which comment? Show them to the motion.
Much to approve?
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes. Mayor Archie?
As stated before, item number eleven has been deferred by the applicant. Go to item twelve, is resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-four, approved interlocal agreement for joint control of pollutants within Panos County.
Resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-four, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing mayor and city manager approval of an interlocal agreement providing joint control of pollutants within Panos County, providing for an effective date. It's resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-four by title only.
Are there any questions for Mr. Robinson? Any public comments in this item?
Chris Robasky, one, six, zero, two, Gulf Beach Village, Tarpon Springs, three, four, six, eight, nine. This is one of the examples of where we have to take things into our own hands locally, uh, citywide as well as countywide, because we can no longer depend on the state to do these things for us. I recently had a meeting about, uh, levels and flows just north of here, and, um, it's becoming more and more true that the Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, no longer stands for that. D E P stands for Do Not Expect Protection. Because they are firing people for doing their jobs. People that are actually working diligently to protect our state have lost their jobs. And so, it is incumbent upon us to do the protecting that the state once did. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Do we have a motion? Uh, show them to the motion.
Much to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes. Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number thirteen, resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-five, intend to amend comprehensive plan to include discovery sports complex improvement project.
Resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-five, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, stating the intent of the Board of Commissioners to amend the city's comprehensive plan to include a park improvement project at the sports complex located at one fifty Jasmine Avenue, and providing for an effective date, resolution twenty thirteen, dash, forty-five by title only.
Basically, in a nutshell, um, we wish to apply for grants to possibly light our, uh, lighted field. Um, and one of the requirements is that we do this, um, give it to Bob, or... But essentially, it's one of the requirements, the grant that we do this, to put in, so...
Yeah.
We have a time limit, I think, October one to submit, so this will be our last opportunity to, to do this. Just go ahead.
Bob Robertson, Public Services Program, and is not directly involved with this project, but I do understand that this is kind of an interim step. We have to add this to the comp plan, we have to add this project to the comp plan. We don't have time to do that now, but D E P and the Firdak will accept the intent via resolution of the board to include that as, uh, uh, a valid, um, statement so that we can apply for the grant.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Any, uh, public comments on this item? Show them to the motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes. Mayor Archie?
Yes. And I believe that concludes the agenda.
You came to staff comments way too quick. I'm, I'm unprepared, so I'm, I'm just saying.
Well, let me officially ask you, Chief. Uh, do you have anything, um, to, to, uh, turn it?
No, thank you. Happy to be here.
It's about as it is. Just, uh, one of the reasons why the zombie run Family Fun Day on the nineteenth is postponed is it looks like that day we are gonna be able to have a combination of that event. First of all, that event going off after the ribbon cutting of our fitness park and the ribbon cutting of our dog park. So we're looking at a big nineteenth, a big event on the nineteenth of October. Um, ribbon cutting of the two parks, uh, I believe the dog park. We're channeling the schedule to cut the ribbon at nine thirty. Then we'll cut the ribbon, go across the street, cut the ribbon for the fitness park at nine forty-five, and the first official event will be the zombie fitness run from that park out to the Angel Nature Park and back for Family Fun Day. Also be a lot of activity delivered to the dog, dog park. We're coordinating with some of the citizens who've been involved in the dog park to get some vendors and stuff out there. So we are postponing that to bring it back October first, the one big event, and, uh, cut both ribbons and, uh, and kick off our, our North Stafford, uh, parks at the end and, uh, get that going as we're working on the plans the next couple of weeks, uh, getting ready to bring to you in the very near future the next addition to that area, the splash park, um, that we've come a long way on the past couple of weeks. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll start finalizing things to bring to commission meeting in October, early November, the, um, addition of a splash park, which I just think will be a combination of three parks right there at our corridor to go to the docks and to downtown that's gonna be unmatched in the area and stuff, so I look forward to bringing that to you. Thank you. I'm clear. Commissioner Tarpani?
Um, I'd just like to remind everybody about music on the beach on Thursday. Um, and my question, uh, for you, Mr. City Manager, any update on string biting light project? I mean, I, I know we're anticipating that before Christmas. Um, I know the light pole, or the, the power pole is in, and I guess the next phase would be to run underground wires and set, uh, the concrete basis?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with you, get you the full timetable of, uh, how that's coming, but, thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Larson?
No comment.
Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Is there an update on Duxton when that might be finished? It's, 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 it's looking, you know, like it's getting there.
As long as all the check off things and about, obviously, I never, projects were never easy here and stuff, so as long as everything checks out, I imagine it's coming soon. Well, I'll get you that date, too. It's coming along great as you can see, and hopefully, uh, uh, be real soon.
And then just, you know, as soon as it's safe to open up eastbound on, uh, uh, Livo Fair, that would be very...
I was down there today looking at the whole situation.
Off to my neighborhood's lease.
Yes. Uh, do we have a meeting scheduled for the, um, twenty-fourth?
The twenty-third?
No, the twenty-third, we have our final required public hearing of the budget, uh, no beginning on the twenty-fourth. Okay. It, I'm just, uh, I say that because, uh, with the, everything that's happening, and most people know about, um, the flood insurance, um, uh, fiasco, as far as every format. Uh, hopefully, if things go as everybody is hoping, that October first, there is some relief, uh, that's given to the homeowners, um, as it relates to that, as well as the businesses. But if not, you know, I would like for us to put, um, a, a resolution on our agenda just so that we can be supportive of the move. I know that, um, a lot is being done behind the scenes, but, you know, if that doesn't happen, then it's gonna have a lot of, uh, uh, con- consequences for our residents. So that's just, if nothing happens, uh, on a national level by October first, then we'll look at our next meeting and try to do something officially to join the rest of the cities, uh, within the county, as well as what's going on around the nation, uh, to, uh, hopefully let our voice be heard.
Do we have a meeting before October first? Because I concur with the mayor. I mean, if, if need be, if we can, uh, get some form of, I don't know, just in order to get that resolution passed, I mean, I, I second that, hands down. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a fiasco if something doesn't happen. I don't know how we would do that.
Well, again, really, and, you know, the behind the scenes and, uh, things behind the scene, we're hoping that comes to effect. Everybody is doing, um, as far as legislative delegations from Florida and their efforts and other states are doing everything they can to do that by the first, and, you know, the word is they do. If they don't, then obviously action, you know, we're have to try to get action somewhere else. I guarantee you, everything is being done now to at least postpone that, um, within the next couple of weeks. So, we'll just have to, you know, see how that goes. What we might, uh, do is, uh, assume on the twenty-third, since all of us are being for the budget thing, is that maybe have a brief, um, special session. I don't just put that... Can we make the, with the, the, is that, isn't that one of the sole things we have to do for the budget on that day, or... Well, what I would suggest is...
You can, you can tack it on the end, but you have to have your budget session at the time that you've advertised it.
Okay.
Notice it before.
And then we can...
So you could, you could, you could schedule a special meeting if you wanna get that resolution done for, you know, notice it for the time after the budget session or whatever time that is.
Okay. And just checking the meantime, I don't know if I mixed up with something else, but there's some type of meeting you can't find anything else on the night. And just, just make sure, because then we have to look at, you know, doing something.
Yeah, you're, you're, I think, and I think that conflicts, you have conflict provisions for your budget meetings can conflict with hearings of other, uh, other taxing authorities. So I think you'd have that, you wouldn't have that problem here.
Yeah. If we can, we'll look at something at that night. We'll do it after, we'll just have it for after the budget meeting. And with that, we'll, uh, adjourn our meeting at, uh, seven thirteen.